Good evening and welcome to the special meeting of Citrus Heights City Council for Thursday, April 8th, 2021. And if you'd call the roll, Amy?
I can't hear anything.
I can hear you. Can you not hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay. Amy, could you call the roll, please?
Sure. Councilmember Bruins, can you hear me? We'll come back to Councilmember Bruins. I see that she is present. Councilmember Daniels?
No, I can't hear anybody.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Middleton?
Present.
And Mayor Miller?
Here. Is there any public comments?
I do have one written public comment. It's for the community support funding. I'm happy to read it now, or if you'd like me to hold it until we get to that point in the study session.
That would be more appropriate, I think, if you held it.
Okay.
And with that, this evening, we're going to hear the two-year budget for '21, '22, and fiscal year '22, '23. Councilmember Bruins and I.
Oh, sorry.
Are you in? Can you hear us now, Jeanne?
Sorry, I got it. I had a little malfunction there for a minute.
Okay. Well, Jeanne and I were able to review this budget with staff at our Finance Committee meeting last week. And as staff will tell you in their presentation, not included is any federal relief funds. We are still awaiting the Treasury Department guidelines for this money, which is anticipated, hopefully, to be around $15 million for Citrus Heights. When we know the amount, we will revise our budgets accordingly. You know, obviously, with free money, there are strings attached. And until we know those strings, it's kind of hard to plug those numbers in. And let me be clear, this relief money will not solve our financial issues. It will help. We need to keep our eye on the ball and be vigilant with our budget. So please ask questions tonight. I had a lot of mine answered in the Finance Committee meeting. And staff will be available for questions from now all the way up to the adoption of the budget. So please get your questions asked and answered. And we will be looking at whether we adopt this or not on April 22nd. And so if you have any questions that you want to ask publicly, you'll be able to do it when we do it in our regular meeting. So with that, I'd like to invite staff to kick us off with the study session for the proposed budget.
All right. Well, thank you, Mayor. I'm Chris Boyd, the city manager. And as the mayor said, we're here tonight to talk about our draft two-year budget and a number of related items around that. And so the meat of the presentation will be around the budget. But we will be also talking a little bit about the capital improvement program, community partnerships. But first, we're going to hear from our departments. It's really kind of a reflection on our hardworking men and women in all the departments within the city that go out and do the job each and every day. So we'll go ahead and get started. Bill, were you going to kick off introductions, or are we going to go right into the departments? All right. Well, why don't we go to the first discussion topic slide?
Maybe if I could just, I'm sorry, just what our goal this evening is to start off by each of the five departments, the department directors or representative will provide an overview. In the budget document that we sent out, that the city manager sent out yesterday, our detailed listing of all the accomplishments for the last two years for each department, as well as a section on goals for the next two years. What we hope to do this evening is just give you a kind of a brief overview from each of the departments on the most significant accomplishments and goals. If we went through each one of them, we'd be here much longer than we have time for this evening. And then we'll jump into discussion of the proposed budget. And then Regina will talk about the draft capital improvement plan. And this is a draft because it will go to the Planning Commission later this month and then come to the City Council, I believe, on May 13th. And then Catherine will talk about the community partnership funding. So I think we're going to start, Chris, with the city manager's goals and accomplishments.
Yes, yes, thank you. Catherine is going to handle that for our office.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. Catherine Cooley, Assistant to the City Manager. Amy, if we could go to the, yes, thank you. The city manager's office is involved in most major policy initiatives on behalf of the city council. But here are some highlights from this last year. We are particularly proud to have led the multi-pronged effective emergency response to COVID-19 across all departments. This includes quickly declaring a state of emergency, as well as changing our, the way we operate, so we can still provide the excellent services that our residents have come to expect. And we're proud of that. Also, importantly, under the direction of the city manager, we decreased spending across all departments, resulting in the savings of more than $1 million to our operating budget, to be as fiscally prudent as possible. We also administered the 2020 election, notably the first election under our new district-based election process. And we worked with IT, our city clerk works with IT, to implement our new electronic document management system. Also, because of COVID, we transitioned to the format that we see here tonight, the virtual format for all of our council meetings. Next slide, please. Particularly, our communications staff was a standout this last year. We hired our communications officer and created really the most robust plan we've ever had for our communications here at City Hall. With the initiatives that you see before you, we communicated with our residents about our major projects, as well as just how they can respond to the pandemic. Next slide, please. Also, economic development is where a lot of our particularly important initiatives are housed, and we're proud of our accomplishments this year. We are going to continue to work to finalize and execute the Sunrise Tomorrow specific plan and the associated development there. Also, we very quickly stood up some programs to help our businesses respond to the pandemic, and also have the resources that they needed. While all of this is happening, we are still proud that we were able to recruit new businesses to revitalize aging shopping centers here, including, most notably, Green Acres. And then, of course, we have our new Sylvan project that we're proud to be moving forward with. Next slide, please. We're proud of our ability to develop initiatives to help our community recover from COVID-19. And we are looking forward to moving forward our specific plan and the associated developments, and also continue in our electronic document management execution and scanning all of our documents, and so we can be completely paperless in our city clerk's department. It'll be exciting. And also, of course, effectively leverage our communications channels here at the city and continue the excellence that we now have and that our residents have come to expect. And with that, I will hand it over to Administrative Services. Thanks.
Thank you. So Administrative Services is comprised of four divisions. We have Human Resources, Risk Management, the city's Finance Division, and Information Technology. This past year certainly, and part of the prior fiscal year, that one of the main focuses of Human Resources has been on dealing with the impact of the COVID pandemic on the city's day-to-day operations. Human Resources successfully created COVID-19 compliance policies to make sure that we are operating in compliance with the health and safety requirements brought on by COVID. We implemented the leave requirements provided in the First Families Coronavirus Response Act. Human Resources created and implemented a teleworking policy, temporary teleworking policy for all of our employees that are now working and have been working remotely from home since, for the past year. And they created a COVID, and implemented a COVID prevention plan, such things as a program where employees now, before they come to work each day, have got to actually log in and complete a high-level health questionnaire, just as a trigger to remind people to be mindful of the symptoms of COVID, as well as making accommodations here at the city facilities for those people that do come in. With Risk Management, the Risk Management section managed all of the city's workers' comp and general liability, open claims, working with the city clerk, with legal counsel, and with our third-party providers. They facilitated safety training and wellness programs to reduce work-related injuries. And this year, they developed a quarterly Safety Committee newsletter for our city employees. Go to the next slide, Amy. One of the major challenges for the finance staff this year has been dealing with FEMA and with the California Office of Emergency Services. One of the major programs that the city implemented related to COVID was the Great Plates Program. And that program is eligible for reimbursement from FEMA and from the state. That turns out to be easier said than done. And it's taken a huge amount of staff effort to provide FEMA and the state with the documents that they need. And we're still, we're still working closely with them, trying to get funds released to the city. It'll happen. It's just taking, taking a while. We also, this year, successfully completed four audits, with no negative findings. And the audits this year were done virtually. And doing a virtual audit is quite a bit more difficult than when the auditors are here. We have to provide everything. All the communication is done electronically, which is a challenge, but it was done successfully. The Fourth Division for Information Technology, our IT group this year, implemented and developed a system to support the citywide work-at-home program. Just to the logistics of having employees working remotely from home and having in place the necessary equipment and security measures when they're accessing city information was a huge undertaking that they were successful at. And they also, this last year, completed upgrades to our antivirus and anti-SPM, as well as our network security systems, and began a migration to the city's new electronic document management system. So those are just some of the highlights of what we think are our most significant accomplishments. As far as looking forward for the next two years, Human Resources is planning to implement a citywide coaching and performance program. We're also have undertaken and will complete early next fiscal year implementation, we hope, of a compensation step system, to something that most agencies have, and we don't yet at this point, but we will. Risk Management is going to review and update the city's personnel rules and regulations, and will coordinate citywide mandated safety training. For Finance, we are going to be looking at identifying potential additional areas where we can offer the convenience of online payment for city services. And Information Technology will be focusing on expanding and finalizing the migration to the new electronic document management system, and also upgrading all of our desktop computers from Windows 7 to Windows 10.
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Chief Ron Lawrence here to present the accomplishments from the police department. And I'm going to start with something that's not on the slides here. And that is, last year, we saw the lowest crime rate in the history of Citrus Heights Police Department, since we've been in a police department. We reduced crime by 6%. And in fact, the last three years have been historic lows in the police department. That's something for our community to be very proud of. It's our community working with our police department very diligently to combat crime and keep things at bay. Amy, if you can go to the next slide. Now, we've got a lot of accomplishments, and I've got 10 slides here. I'm not going to cover everything on there, but just suffice it to say, you deserve to be very proud of your police department, and all the accomplishments that the men and women serving you have accomplished. For example, on this slide, we established the corporal program for sworn personnel and senior program for professional staff to enhance police supervision and aid in succession planning. This is our leadership development. It added a specialty assignment for a corporal rank that's equivalent to seniors, and helps us in building our future bench of leaders in the community, I mean, the police department. If you go to the next slide. We issued, of course, we weren't immune to dealing with the pandemic like all the other departments. We issued 13 general orders. These are emergency department policies related to COVID-19 to mitigate efforts designed to protect our employees as well as the public, while still maintaining our public safety services. Of course, they all followed the CDC guidelines and recommendations. But if you can imagine, operating a police department 24 hours, seven days a week, and we were fully operational the entire time, we had to take very particular steps to make sure that our employees remain safe and could still provide responding to calls for service and enforcing the law. Moving on to the next slide, the Operations Division. We completed a new dispatch training room redesign, and communication supervisor workstations to enhance our capabilities and training for dispatch and staff. We successfully upgraded the use-of-force training simulator provided, and provided valuable training to our officers. Now, this is in an era of use-of-force reform, not only in California, but our nation. We felt it important to have onsite use-of-force simulator training for our police officers, to make sure we're getting them up-to-date proficiency with the laws, best practices, and making sure that they're staying safe in the application of force when it comes to enforcing the law. Going to the next slide. We developed strategies to managing our short staffing shortages and reduce workforce mitigation to combat the impacts of the fiscal budget, to ensure basic patrol services were maintained for our community. And although it's true, we have shrunk the police department by virtue of a shortened budget, we still wanted to maintain those core services of responding to 911 calls, maintaining our 911 center and our dispatch center, so that we could continue to provide a quality's police service to our community. We continued to complete multiple DUI checkpoints through grant funding of the Office of Traffic Safety, and reduced our DUI collisions as a result. Going to the next slide. This one was unique this year to us. We didn't anticipate doing it, but we stood up a virtual department operations center. And this is to maintain constant situational awareness related to the pandemic, as well as civil unrest, fires throughout the state of California, particularly in our region, severe weather incidents. What this does is it assigns key personnel in the police department to make sure we're in constant contact with the Office of Emergency Services, with, in this case, the Public Health Department, with our allied agencies, to ensure that we know what impacts would not only come to Citrus Heights, but to our region, so that we were absolutely prepared for whatever might come our way. And of course, with that, we assisted throughout the year with multiple state and regional emergencies through what's called mutual aid, including fires and civil unrest. We were in downtown Sacramento assisting the sheriff's office, CHP, and SACPD on multiple occasions with civil unrest and riots in those locations, as well as fires throughout Northern California, helping with evacuations, security of communities that might be looted when they've been evacuated, and so forth. Moving to the next slide for Special Services Division. We were very excited about having a dedicated officer funded through the Sunrise Marketplace. And this is Officer Jeff Shoutin. You might be familiar with him. He's been assigned to the Sunrise Marketplace, funded by SMP. And his presence there has reduced crime in that area about 30% over the last year. I'm very proud of what he's done. He's connected the businesses, the different security businesses there, and made sure that they're working as one team. And his presence has been a real big boon for our Sunrise Marketplace. We've expanded our small unmanned aerial system program. This is our drones. We've increased to 11 pilots now, conducting over 400 flights and several hundred hours of flight time to assist with critical incidents and other areas of police response. Our navigator, even through the pandemic, was still able to house 106 homeless clients in our city. That's a remarkable accomplishment. Our rental housing inspection program, which launched last year, identified over 5,800 safety-related violations, and worked closely with the property owners to correct those violations and make sure that our tenants, our renters, our tenants have the most healthy environment to live in, and that they have a very good relationship with their landlords. And on the next slide, our POP and CODE unit administered programs to provide free masks. We handed out over 14,000 masks that we procured from the state to our local businesses during the pandemic. This was our effort to make sure we were helping our local economy, our local businesses to stay open, to give the masks to their employees, to their customers, to make sure that the city was doing our part to keep people safe from the pandemic. And also during the pandemic, you know, our police department's very special. We've always had a connection with our community, our community outreach, the relationship we have with our residents is phenomenal. And we wanted to maintain that despite the stay-at-home order, despite the quarantine. So we were able to be very creative and very unique in still providing community relations. And we did that through several special events for our local youth, including over 20, what we called birthday brigades, 20 drive-by birthday caravans for young kids having their birthday that were cooped up in their homes, and they still wanted to celebrate. We're able to join with them in that. We did a video graduation celebrating our high school seniors and their graduation who couldn't graduate in person. We did pandemic-friendly holiday celebrations during Halloween. We did the reverse trunk-or-treat. During the Christmas season in December, we did the Miracle on Fountain Square, allowing our community to still have a relationship with their police department and celebrate during those very special times. We graduated nine students from our very successful Mesa Verde Pathway program. This is a youth program in our high school here that introduces kids to law enforcement. And interestingly enough, all nine students were females this year. And who knows, they might end up working for us someday. We secured a $600,000 grant for anti-tobacco and vaping in our schools, and that's started to be a real success there in our local high schools in particular. On the next slide, we updated the police department's strategic plan. In addition to the city council's strategic plan, we have every year a strategic plan specific to the police department, to make sure we're able to not only accomplish the city's goals, but continually move the police department forward in regards to into the future with best practices, and making sure that we're maintaining society's expectations. On the next slide, we were able to, even though we sent our volunteer staff home for most of last year, we were able to bring a lot of them back now, and utilize them to assist us in essential functions of patrol and nuisance-related traffic problems. Throughout our, developed and trained an auxiliary team to help and enhance our capabilities with call-taking in our 911 center. This helps us to triage different 911 calls coming into our 911 center. And on the last slide here, the next two things I want to talk about are something I really need to start getting in front of you. And this is that we're in the process of transitioning from our unified crime reporting, our UCR, which is that crime data that the chief presents to you every year in our annual report. It's changing. And so we're moving to a national incident-based reporting system, or NIBR, and in California, it's called CYB, as California Incident-Based Reporting System. It's going to look, and I just want you to be aware of that, it's a monumental task, and our staff is doing a lot of work transitioning to that. Along with that, we're implementing a program to gather traffic data stop to be compliant with a state mandate called the Racial Identity and Profiling Act, or RIPA. This is another state mandate that we need to do to collect data on each traffic stop we perform. And then lastly, we were able to leverage grant funding and collaborative regional partnerships to maintain effective domestic violence, sexual assault, and child exploitation investigations, which are, even though we're working on a slimmer budget, it's important for us to make sure that we're maintaining those types of investigation. And I'll turn it over to my colleagues in the Community Development Department. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Lawrence, and good evening, members of the council. This is Colleen McDuffie, your Community Development Director. Community development consists of three divisions. They are building, housing and grants, and planning. So I'll briefly now just go over the accomplishments and goals for those three divisions. Starting with building, for a long time now, building has been trying to go more paperless and have increased usage of online applications by our customers. And so that was one good thing about the pandemic, that really accelerated this program, something we've been wanting to do for quite some time. So currently, we're about 98% online of applications and plan review for building permits. Building did not slow down at all during the pandemic, and has performed over 6,000 inspections during this period. Some of those inspections included wrapping up a program that was called for by SB 721, which required that we proactively go out and inspect exterior elevated elements on existing development. Those are things like decks and balconies, stairs, for safety purposes. Finally, in building, they, or we implemented a remote video inspection program very early on in the pandemic. In those early days, when there was a lot of uncertainty, that allowed us to still continue doing inspections. Moving on to housing and grants. As a result of some federal funding that came about as a result of the pandemic, the CARES Act, we received an additional allotment of CDBG funds. So we awarded about $376,000 additional dollars this year to help our low-income residents who were facing certain risks as a result of COVID-19. And this included a substantial increase to the supplemental navigator fund this year. We developed a consolidated plan for our entire CDBG program, which covers the years 2020 to 2024. And we also, as part of that, conducted an analysis to the impediments of fair housing. Partnering with many of the wonderful nonprofit and service organizations here in the city, we were able to provide public service programs to about 35,000 low and moderate income households in the city. We collaborated with Jamboree Housing in order to help them secure all the complex financing that they need to obtain from our federal, state, and local partners. Happy to report that project is still moving on, by the way. And last I heard, they're looking for a groundbreaking around June 1st of this year. In planning, accomplishments included initiation of the specific plan and EIR process for Sunrise Tomorrow. We approved two affordable housing projects. That included the Jamboree project I just referenced, as well as a senior project down on Fair Oaks. as well as a senior project down on Fair Oaks Boulevard. We established planning principles for our new Sylvan property. And early on in the pandemic, we created the temporary outdoor program to assist businesses who had to quickly move their operations outside during, to comply with the various regulations. Moving on now to goals for the upcoming two fiscal years. In building, they want to continue their progress on online permitting and electronic plan review process with the goal of being one hundred percent paperless. We hope to expand our remote video inspection program. And also kind of similar theme as our application process, we also want to improve upon our inspection request process to improve that to be a hundred percent electronic and remote as well. In housing and grants, I think this is probably a goal we have every year, but we want to continue to support those very important nonprofits who provide public services to our community. We hope to complete the Sayonara Drive Replacement Housing Project. And we also have a goal of issuing between ten to fourteen housing repair loans or accessibility grants to low-income households. And finally, in planning, goals for the next two years, we hope to adopt the Sunrise Tomorrow specific plan, EIR, and then importantly, assist in its implementation. We hope to implement a new permit tracking software that will also allow for online submittals for the planning division. And we hope to be in receipt of and process the entitlements for the new Sylvan property and the Birdcage property. And that concludes my portion here, and I'd like to turn it over to General Services now.
Thank you, Colleen. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Regina Cave, Operations Manager in the General Services Department. I'm going to provide a brief overview of the last two years of successful accomplishments, as well as following two years' goals and objectives for our department. General Services is comprised of four divisions. We have Engineering, Operations and Maintenance, Facilities and Fleet, and Community Services. So starting with Engineering, in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, we completed the construction of the Highland Avenue Rinconada Drainage Improvements Project. This project was identified as one of our priorities in our eight, nine, ten areas drainage master plan. We also completed a design for the Benita Storm Drain Improvements Project. That project is scheduled to advertise for construction this month with an expectation of completing the project in twenty twenty-one. We adopted the Multimodal Transportation Safety Program and began preparations to launch the program to implement priority projects as stipulated in Council's Strategic Planning Retreat. We also partnered with Sacramento County Department of Transportation to deliver paving project to address large sections of Madison Avenue, as well as Wachtel. And it's actually Kenneth we'll be constructing on, or county will be constructing pavement improvements on Kenneth through the Oak Avenue intersection. And that project is scheduled to begin in the next two weeks. Next slide, please. Additionally, for Engineering, provided development review for multiple major projects, commercial development projects here in the city, including Green Acres, the Surgery Center, and Raising Canes. Also issued design contracts for the Green Back Lane Complete Streets Project. This project will improve not only the pavement, but ADA, bike ped accommodations and safety improvements from Sunrise through the Fair Oaks intersection. We updated speed limits on five roadway segments and certified six additionals to align with current state regulations. Next slide, please. And for our Citywide Operations and Maintenance, completed the updated pavement management program, which conducted a full pavement analysis of all city-owned and maintained streets, providing real-time data on the conditions, treatment options, and cost and estimates. This will help us strategize, stretching out our funding that we have available for our residential and arterial paving projects. And also look to leverage some of these funds for larger capital projects as well. We also awarded a new contract for our Citywide Landscape Maintenance Services. And we cleared approximately one hundred and thirty-eight acres of open space and sixteen miles of creeks, excuse me, six miles of creeks throughout the city. Next slide, please. We provided routine maintenance of over one thousand four hundred and ten city-owned trees to ensure preservation of the city's tree canopy. And for that, we have been awarded again as Tree City USA. We provided ongoing street sweeping services to meet our NPDES, or National Pollution Discharge Illumination System, permit requirements. We processed over seven hundred encroachment permits in twenty twenty, both construction and utility improvements throughout the city. We also provided responsive repair and maintenance of the street light and traffic signal system. And for our Facility and Fleet Services, replaced the audiovisual system at the community center. We also installed AV components to provide new services to record and broadcast webinars and meetings and trainings in both the south rooms. Replaced failing security cameras at the community center. Administered the Great Plates Delivered Citrus Heights program, investing two point four million into the local restaurant's community and reaching an average of a hundred and sixty residents per week. Repainted the interior of this Citrus Heights Community Center. We also opened up the cooling center with COVID nineteen guidelines in place. And created and maintained industry-standard COVID custodial cleaning protocols throughout all of the city-owned facilities. Next slide, please. And for Community Services, administered a fifty thousand dollar household hazardous waste program, an educational grant, and that grant provided both social media and in-print outreach to our community. We included review of transit infrastructure and operational needs for development projects, such as the Sunrise Tomorrow, and also included in our capital projects like Auburn Boulevard, Green Back Lane, San Juan Complete Streets. And we participated in the Regional Public Works Group to support and streamline regional funding through SECOG. This greatly helped support our grant application and a successful awarding or draft, excuse me, tentative awarding of multiple grants from SECOG for both Auburn Boulevard and for the old Auburn Complete Streets Project. And again, also participated in a grant application review team for SECOG Regional Funding Program that just concluded this last spring. Next slide, please. And provided administrative and technical support services to all aspects of the department. Much like my other coworkers in other departments, during the COVID pandemic, General Services stayed quite busy with above-average communications to and from the public requesting services. And so we've maintained a strong support service here in the department. We completed city ordinance updates adopted to ensure ongoing compliance related to unfunded state mandates for commercial recycling and mandatory organics recycling. And we entered into an inspection services agreement with SAC County EMD to provide compliance assistance for unfunded state mandates related to commercial and organics recycling. And this was for many businesses generating both hazmat and food waste recycling that are already receiving inspections from EMD. Next slide, please. And so for our goals for twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-two, twenty-three for Engineering, our goal is to complete this final design for Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Phase Two and initiate construction. As mentioned, there are recommendations for Auburn Boulevard to receive a substantial grant, completing our final puzzle of the grant funding for that project. We're also scheduled to complete design and construct the Green Back Lane Complete Streets Project. Also utilize the city's payment management system to select and evaluate pavement projects, looking to leverage as much funding as we possibly can and be able to address as many residential streets as possible with our limited budget. And also, we're professional services agreement for the San Juan Avenue Complete Streets Phase One project. That project is currently out for proposals for design and right-of-way. Next slide, please. For Citywide Operations and Maintenance, organize and lead up to three community volunteer cleanup events on an annual basis. We have charity events in our partnerships with local church groups over the years, and we're hoping to reinvigorate those post-COVID. We also continue to provide creek and vegetation maintenance services citywide with the goal of completing up to eight thousand five hundred millimeter feet of creek clearing. Continue to maintain and enhance our city tree canopy, focusing on preservation of our mature species. And complete the LED conversion of five hundred streetlights throughout the city. Next slide, please. For Facilities and Fleet Services, develop and launch new event staffing model for the community center in an effort to create efficiencies and reduce operational costs. Post-COVID nineteen, look to redefine the marketing plan for the community center to increase revenue and bookings and in effort to maintain and enhance competitiveness with other facilities throughout the region. Look to market the new in-house webinar and recording features of the south rooms at the community center. And provide preventative maintenance, administrative, fuel services, and safety checks for all city-owned fleet. Next slide. For Community Services, provide education and outreach to local businesses regarding organics recycling, edible food recovery opportunities, and commercial recycling compliance. With to finalize organics compliance plan for Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three, which again, our mandatory organics collection for residential customers and additional requirements, and begin the implementation process. Work with SACRT to facilitate improvements to transit infrastructure and amenities, focusing a lot on not only amenities throughout development projects in conjunction with development projects, but with our capital projects as well. And then partner with SACRT to educate residents about transit services available to the city and throughout the region, pushing out social media posts and a lot more information post-COVID. And that concludes General Services.
All right, so I think we'll move on to getting into the next two-year proposed budget. I'm sorry I didn't introduce myself. I'm Bill Zanoni, the Interim Administrative Services Director. I think what we'd like to do this evening is start with the general fund. And this, the proposed budget was reviewed with the Finance Administration Committee about two weeks ago. We went through the proposed budget in detail. So if we can start with the next slide, just an overview of this two-year budget. This is definitely a hold-the-line budget. There are no new programs requested in this next two-year window. It is, in fact, a budget where we are continuing to operate at the reduced levels that we did this fiscal year in order to get the budget to balance. The Revenue Neutrality Agreement that the city entered into with Sacramento County will expire next fiscal year. So next year is the last year that the city will have to return its property tax revenue to the county. And the second year of this two-year budget, we will, and we've anticipated in this budget, receiving and keeping approximately six point four million dollars in the general fund. This two-year budget assumes the continuation or the the unfunding of thirty-four positions. Of those positions, twenty-seven are full-time. Of those twenty-seven full-time positions that are being unfunded during this two-year window, twenty-six are in the police department. We've also included seven limited-term positions as limited-term or part-time positions as unfunded in this two-year budget. Go to the next slide. This chart shows the general fund revenue. And I just did the second year of the budget because I wanted to include the property tax revenue in this chart. And so what you can see is that this, for the total city general fund revenue in the second year of the budget, our three largest sources of revenue, sales tax, motor vehicle license fee, and property tax, in that order, make up about seventy-four percent of the total general fund revenue. In past budgets, we've shown general fund, included in general fund revenue, the property tax dollars, but then we've also shown them as an expenditure to net out to zero. But in twenty-two, twenty-three, they will remain with the city. Okay, next slide. This table identifies our various sources of revenue to the general fund. And what we've shown here is the adopted twenty-twenty-one budget compared to the proposed budget or projected revenues for the next two years. Included in the twenty-twenty-one budget is a line item for line of credit draw when the budget was approved. That, two years ago, that included an anticipated drawdown of one point two million dollars from the line of credit because we had anticipated or we knew we were going to be in a budget shortfall position. Subsequent to that, the decision was made to, rather than draw down the line of credit to help balance this year's budget, that steps would be taken to reduce expenditures. And those reductions were mostly on the labor side. I believe about two point four million dollars of reductions in labor this year, as well as about seven hundred thousand dollars of reductions in actual expenditures for operating costs across all the departments. So all the departments made a real effort this year to really reduce their expenditures. In comparing the twenty-twenty-one budget to the twenty-one, twenty-two for revenues, the major areas of difference are on sales tax. We had anticipated a significant reduction in sales tax revenue this year based on what we have seen. We did see a reduction in actual storefront sales, but a good portion of that was made up by online sales and the revenue that we got from that sales tax. Excuse me, our utility users tax is coming in this year, and we're projecting for the next two years slightly under what we had budgeted in fiscal year twenty twenty-one. And we are not assuming the drawdown or the utilization of the line of credit for operating expenses in either of the next two years. Okay, we could go to the next slide. The next two slides will go through our expenditures by department. This first table includes the city council budget, as well as the departments and other budgets that are considered under the Management and Support category. The items, I think, that are significant, or where you'll see a significant change, is on the non-departmental. You can see that that budget went from seven hundred and fifty-nine thousand to two million dollars and then up to two point two million the following year. The main driver for that is we've changed the way we're accounting for our payment to CalPERS. We have to make an annual payment for our unfunded pension liability. And in the past, we've budgeted that in each of the departments, and it was just a confusing way to do it. And so now we've moved it from the individual departments to a single line item in non-departmental. And we've also budgeted in this non-departmental budget two hundred and forty-eight thousand dollars the first year and two hundred and forty-five thousand for payment for our OPEB, other post-employment benefit liability. The other change that is in this budget is community events. In past years, we have budgeted community events in a separate fund, but that fund was Uh but that fund was basically funded by transfers from the general fund. So again, just to be. Make the budget a little bit clearer and less complicated, we've moved those um. That budget into the general fund since that's the funding source. And then I had eliminated the the transfer. We could go to the next slide. These are the remaining departments in the general fund. You can see the police department budget. This this year, the approved budget was $22.5 million. The proposed budget for next fiscal year is 19.5 million dollars, so a reduction. Um of $3 million in the police department budget. That reflects um the the. Positions, 26 positions that are being held vacant in police. The community center operations, we're assuming that the community center will um hopefully reopen to the public next year. And we will, we've anticipated revenue um coming in to help offset these um operating costs. Down towards the bottom. On transfers out, you can see transfers out has gone from 269,000 to 777 and then to a million five the second year. When we met with the council in January and went through the um the list of. Funding requirements, there were several items on that which we'll get into um it on the the next slide. That we identified as um items that um. We believe needed to be funded that have not been funded for the last several years or in some cases for many years. Those are now included in in this line item. Um and you can see for revenue neutrality. This is the offset to the property tax revenue. So in 2122, we're showing revenue of 6.3 million dollars. And then we've got an offsetting expense for 2223. We don't have that. We we uh we're. Going to keep that uh the property tax revenue. So what we are um. Based on what we are um. Anticipating in this budget with the revenues that we forecasted. Again, based on what we know at this time or what we believe we know at this time, we're projecting a shortfall next fiscal year. Um of $77,305. That means our um expenses will exceed our revenues by about $77,000. The first year of the two-year budget, the second year of the two-year budget. Um, we are um anticipating a uh a budget. Um situation where our expenditures will be under our revenues by 3.7 million dollars. The the net effect of those compared to what we we went through uh with council in um. January, at the January workshop. These numbers combined over this two-year window are within $10,000 of what we told you in uh January. So we uh I think we in January, we projected a shortfall of $170,000. The first year and then a surplus of a little bit more the second year, but over this two-year budget. We are within $10,000 for what we had um anticipated several months ago when we uh gave you preliminary forecast projections. The next slide. So again, um this is uh the the same information that we showed you in January. Where we identified um additional funding requirements that um have not been funded. That in order to be fiscally prudent, we believe these um. These items should be included in the budget and we have included these in this. Budget that's being presented uh for consideration on April 22nd. We've included funding for building maintenance. Money in the second year of the budget to set aside for major capital uh. Repairs or replacement for city facilities. We have included money uh funding the 300,000 the first year and $350,000 for compensated absences. Um as we explained previously, we have not um. Set funds aside for that in the past. And so when we have employees. That leave the city and we are required by uh labor agreements to fund them for their earned and accrued leave. Um, we don't have funds typically available for that, and that has a negative impact on the budget. We've uh budgeted money $50,000 the first year and 150,000 the second year for equipment and software replacement. Again, in the non-departmental budget, we've uh. Re-instituted the annual payments to the OPEB trust. We have uh. Set aside funding $150,000 this coming year and 400,000 the following year. Uh into a uh a sinking fund, if you will, so that there are funds available when we need to replace. The city's uh various fleet and and that doesn't become a huge burden on the budget in any one year. And again, at this point, we have not um included any funds in the general fund for um street repairs. So these are the, these are the same numbers. The total is $938,000 in 2122 and 1.7 million in 2223 that we. Uh, we reviewed um. In Jan, when at the January workshop.
Bill. I'd like to uh interject here before we leave this slide. This slide here has been a source of um. Really of some comments on the part of Councilmember Tim Schaefer that I think um it's important. Uh for really the integrity of the city and the staff to seek some clarification. Uh, we showed a version of this slide uh in the January public workshop. And Mr. Schaefer there, you said that the slide looks very different. It's a very different scenario. It's almost completely different set of scenarios. And I think it'd be important, sir, if you wouldn't mind clarifying uh what what you saw that was uh completely different.
Uh, well, I don't have the 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 slide from. I was making a reference from the slide from the December 18th uh meeting where we had two by two. And I was comparing that to the slide that was presented in January. That was where I saw the difference.
Okay, I have both slides. Let me show them to you. So those are my copies. You see, one is uh December, two by two with the council members and the others, the January study session. And it was the January meeting when you were referring to the December and and the January. And again, you said it's almost completely different set of scenarios is what you said.
Well, uh, so. Okay, so. I will stand corrected and um and uh say that the slides are not identical. Um, and I would say that they're uh one certainly shows a uh $12 million for the streets and the next one shows uh. On the bottom line, the total of a 14.28, 248 million dollar deficit, so um or expense. So that was the 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 primary concern that you have. Um, when you look at the table of expenses, um you have building maintenance. We can both read this. Um, they're not the same, so I I I'm I'm I'm. I want to sort of stop right here and kind of say that. I'm delighted to see what I've seen. This is not a uh a scenario that that anybody wants to be. Uh, in this position that we're in. Um, it it's not a, it's not an enviable place to be, but nonetheless, it's much better. Um, and I and I I will have to attribute this potentially to Mr. Zanoni and and how he's presented this. A few slides back, um he was, uh, he specifically stated that uh he may took some measures for clarity. And uh I sincerely appreciate that. So um and I so far. Uh, what I'm seeing here is I think it's um it's uh. It's it's making the best of a bad situation.
All right, thank you. I um so. So that statement was made, so I just want to make sure that when you said it's completely different and then we went on. Three different executives that council meeting explained the differences, Rhonda Rivera, Bill Zanoni and myself. Um, and you also said during that meeting that um. Referring to this slide, it hadn't been budgeted in over 10 years. We're going to choose to pull this out now. During a pandemic that suddenly it's an emergency that we fund these items. I think that certainly, I don't understand that. That doesn't make any sense to me. That you're going to pull all this entire table of doom and gloom outright when they're in the middle of a pandemic. So. Mr. Schaefer, if you want my, which items on here do you believe that we should not be funding?
Well, I I I think that the timing is is what I had some serious concerns about there. Um, and it it happened to be um in a situation where. Um, we are, you you said, you stated to me that this, most of these items that were on this list, we hadn't funded in a decade. And so suddenly we have this, and I'll say it again, it's a doom, it was a doom and gloom scenario and. I I don't understand, I still don't understand, at least at that time, why they were being presented. Uh, at this time where we already know budget revenues are at a shortfall. I don't know why we want to. I I just didn't understand. What the point was of making this scenario worse than it needs to be. Um, and that's how it's coming across to me. So uh certainly I'm I'm. Certainly entitled to express my opinion here.
Um, maybe I can help with this. I think what was being said that got misconstrued is we've always paid these costs. They just haven't been put in the budget. So we always have equipment failing, maintenance to do. Um, and when things were flush uh with our previous city manager, you could fudge a little bit and you could cover the uh. Uh employee compensation. We can't, we're so razor-thin that we're we're budgeting for it. And I think that's the big difference in where the misunderstanding lies. I don't know if that helps.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, just lastly, and we can certainly move on, but after staff had explained um. Or tried to explain your remarks, the next council meeting on February 11th. Uh, Mr. Schaefer, you said, I think it was very misleading presentation. I think it was repressory for Measure M not passing. And it really has shaken my trust in the city manager and Mr. Zanoni. So it's no question that I'll be definitely be voting no on this. Um, I think that the community and the council and the staff definitely would like to understand what your comment meant there.
Mayor, can I jump in here for a second? Mayor, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's incredibly improper for the questions and comments that the city manager is making right now. Okay, the councilman is entitled to his opinion on the matter. And if the city manager had a problem with the councilman's opinion on the matter. He should have taken that up with him before a live meeting and calling him out essentially on it. So I'd like to ask this, could just please move on with this meeting and stop this highly improper dialogue?
I I I think we all can agree on that, stopping the improper dialogue. So let's move on. Uh, good point, Fred.
All right, Mr. Zanoni, please continue.
Maybe if we could move to the to the next slide. So just to summarize, um for fiscal year 2021 with the proposed budget as. Um presented with uh the cuts to service and 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 the staff of. Physician vacancies, we're projecting a shortfall of about $77,000. For the second year of this two-year budget. We um are assuming that the city will receive and retain its share of property tax revenue. Uh, we've also um included in the second year of the budget. Um, the first repayment of principal on the line of credit, as you'll recall. Uh, we drew down, the city drew down uh approximately 3.5 million dollars. On the uh $12 million line of credit to purchase the Sylvan property. We have to have that paid back. Uh, the line of credit has to be repaid fully by September, I believe, of 2024. So we've um assumed a $2 million repayment in 2223 and then the balance. Would fall outside of this budget window, but within the the parameters of the line of credit uh requirements. Um, and with that, we've um, we are assuming that we will end fiscal year 2223 with a. A positive contribution to the general fund of 3.7 million dollars. Um, if I can just just stop there for just one real quick second. That is a, that's definitely a good thing. Um, but just um as a reminder of what we did discuss back in January. The general fund um as of. Uh, July 1st, the beginning of this fiscal year. Had a a reserve balance of 4.9 million dollars. That is um, that is all of our assets in the general fund. That's cash plus whatever funding is is due to us. The actual cash balance um in the general fund as of July 1st was 2.1 million dollars. As of this morning. Um, the report that we ran this morning, our revenues so far this year are 21.9 million. Our expenditures to date have been 25.8. So our um just this fiscal year. Um, our revenues exceed our, I'm sorry, our revenues are under our expenditures by 3.9 million dollars. So if we started the year with 2.1 million in the bank. Our expenditures exceed our revenues by 3.9 million. You can see where the general fund cash position is right now. That is due to the timing um of when we receive revenue. We will receive a a half about a. Four million dollar, four and a half million dollar payment uh next month for our. The second half of our motor vehicle license fees as well as uh property tax, or I'm sorry, sales tax. Uh, payments are always two months behind. But but I I'm hoping that I can stress how important it is that we need to have several years where we build up our general fund reserve. Uh, we are right now um part of what's contributed to this this year. Um, is that we had to advance money for uh costs related to dealing with uh the coronavirus pandemic. Um, including the Great Plates Program. And we are still waiting for reimbursement on those costs. So we'll get it eventually, but in the meantime. The general fund has to front the money. So. And then that can happen at any point. So I think um. I just can't stress enough how important it is that we need to build up our general fund reserve. Um, over time, um so that we have a cushion and we're not in a position like this where the general fund is in a negative. Negative cash position. And then um within this budget, again, we still have no funding provided for street maintenance and repairs. But the estimate has been that um what is needed is approximately $12 million um a year. And and this budget does hold the the uh. Permanent and uh part-time and temporary positions vacant for the two-year window.
Bill, do we have any sense at all when the Great Plates Reimbursement will take place?
We have done, um, we have done, or actually Tammy. Tammy Nassardi, the finance manager, has has even been praised by FEMA for doing everything correctly. I think she is, her work on this has been a model for other cities to follow. And even with that. work on this has been a model for other cities to follow. And even with that, with FEMA, they're, they have, they, they don't disagree with our numbers. They don't disagree with all of the documentation that we filed. It's internally, they, they've had, they first blamed the delay on the change in administration. They blamed the delay on other emergencies, other throughout the, throughout the, the country. And then they, they internally made a, made a calculation error that they have to correct. So we think, in answer to your question, we, we had a call with the, someone fairly high up in FEMA last week. We have another call scheduled on the 19th, and they're trying to, they realize it's their, their error, not ours. And that this is creating a financial hardship for us. And so we're hoping when we have our next follow-up call on April 19th, that they've got some good news. They're trying to fast, I can't say fast track, they're trying to push it through and get it approved. There are cities out there that haven't even started the process yet. And I don't know what's going to happen with them. So at least we are in the front of the line, and they've confirmed that we've done everything correctly. It's just a bureaucracy that's...
Thank you for your answer, and thank you to you and Tammy and anybody else involved for being in the forefront and, and not delaying getting in what needs to be.
We are, we are, it's, I, I feel, I believe at this point, we have the right people, we have the phone numbers and the email addresses for the right people. So we just need them to mail us a check.
Yeah, you admitted that. Hopefully, good news soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Hopefully by the 22nd, we'll have something good to report.
Okay, thank you.
So Amy, if we could go to the next slide. In addition to the general fund, the city has, maybe we'll go one more slide, a number of other funds. We have special revenue funds, which are all the funds on the, on the left that have a, a 200 series. We have five capital improvement funds. And then on, on the, the next slide, you'll see we have a development, development fees, and separate funds for each of those, as well as the, the various assessment districts within the city. The, the majority, or a good portion of these funds are utilized for capital expenses throughout the city. And so not all of these dollars, but a good portion of them are included in the capital improvement program that Regina will, will go through in a moment. And so I'd be happy to answer questions on any of these. There's a lot of, a lot of numbers and a lot of funds, but they're, they're, these are all separate from the general fund. They all have their own balances. So you can see that at the, what they, what they don't spend in one fiscal year stays in that fund and carries forward to the following year. The funds that are, that are, we're watching, and we have watched for a while, are some of the assessment district funds, where there are not, they're not generating sufficient revenue to cover the, the, the increase in costs over time.
Bill, are these funds restricted? The development fees, I mean, can, we can't use these for...
Yes. No, they are, they are, they're set up specifically. So for example, the roadway development fee can only be used for roadway, and they're, they should, there's, they're, they are, we have to account for them, that they're supposed to be used for costs associated with new development. So if new development, for example, the park facilities fee, if new development puts, puts a demand on the city's park facilities or transportation and transit, we have to, there has to be a nexus between the, what the fee was collected for and what it's spent on.
Thank you. Any other questions for Bill?
No. Just the last, the last number I'll throw out there, and then I'll be finished, is for all of the city funds, general fund and all of our other funds, the bottom line for fiscal year '21, '22 shows revenue of $67.9 million, expenditures of $72.7. And that's okay, because those funds, again, they have a balance. They, they, what they don't spend this year, they can, or last year, they can spend next year. And for the second year, our bottom line budget for revenues is $70.9 million, and our bottom line expenditures for all city funds is $67.9 million. And I think with that, that we can move on to the draft capital improvement program.
Thank you. Amy, if you can please go to the next slide. So this provides a synopsis of all the projects that we have listed in our CIP, our draft CIP for the next five years. Some of these projects are listed in council's strategic grid, and some of these are carryover. I'm just going to highlight just a few of these, mainly ones that we know will have expenditures this next budget cycle. So for Arcade Cripple Creek Trail Project, this is also known as our Electric Greenway Project. We anticipate being under construction in this next fiscal, fiscal year with the completion with fiscal year '22, '23. Of course, we have our Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Revitalization Project. We are happy to say at this point that we are tentatively fully funded on this project through construction. We do have, there is a draft recommendation to SAICOG to award Citrus Heights $9 million, which is that final puzzle of our funding. However, we still have a major hurdle to overcome, and that is cash flowing the project. As Bill said, and he's mentioned in the past, that the general fund funds a lot of our federally or state-funded construction projects because they are all reimbursement basis grants. So we have to have the cash in order to fund these projects as we continue to get reimbursements based upon progress payments for the projects. So for Auburn Boulevard, for example, we've got $14.5 million of the grant funds, and approximately 20 months worth of construction. We'll be looking at cash flow anywhere from $2 to $4 million potentially a month on a project like that, depending on the phase and the type of work that's being performed out there. So that is a hurdle that we will have to address, and we will need to get that dialed in before we actually start construction in '22, '23. We also have the Needaway Drainage Improvement Project. Again, that project is set to advertise for construction within about the next week, and we expect to be under construction hopefully by the end of this fiscal year. Primarily, most of the construction will fall into next fiscal year and will be completed during the summer, fall time. Our Greenback Lane Complete Streets Project, this project again will be under construction. If we align everything correctly, in '21, '22, we do have to have our $600,000 allocation from STA expended by June of next year. The mayor was at the STA meeting today where they approved, confirmed our extension for another year to allow us time to expend those funds. And as Bill had mentioned, with roadway impact funds, that we have to find a nexus to expend those dollars. And so we will be looking at expending some of our roadway impact fees on Greenback because of the nexus to the new development over at Mitchell Village. We also have our Mariposa Safe Routes to School Phase Four Project. This is also another grant-funded project, and will be under construction this summer. And then we have our Payment Restoration Program. This utilizes a majority of our SB1 funds that we receive, the routine maintenance funds, which was that increase in the gas tax. Some of those funds for the next fiscal year, this fiscal year, next fiscal year, possibly the following fiscal year, will also look to reimburse county as part of our shared agreement that we have with them to reconstruct or repave Madison Avenue and Kenneth. And then we have our San Juan Complete Streets Project. We are currently out for design proposals. We expect to have design completed and right-of-way completed within the next year and a half, with anticipation of constructing in '23, '24. That project is not realistically fully funded. We are looking at other avenues to leverage additional federal funds, and with the intent of being able to retract some of our local funds. So then we can use some of those local funds to leverage for other grants as well. It's kind of a money game when we're, we're drafting out our CIP, trying to maximize our local funds, but also trying to take advantage of as much grant funding as possible. And that's pretty much it for the updates. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to entertain.
Any questions for Regina?
Thank you, Regina. No questions for me.
Okay, next.
Next slide. So as far as the budget, the next steps will be to come back to council on April 22nd with a resolution adopting the budget. In the meantime, if there are any questions or any additional information you need, we'd be happy to, to provide that. Once the budget is adopted in April, then during the months of May and June, council will be reviewing and hopefully approving the five-year capital improvement program. I think the first meeting in April, or I'm sorry, the first meeting in May, we'll be coming back with the appropriations limit. That's something that council has to approve every year. We can't do it in April because we don't have the, the information we need yet from the state. And as Mayor Miller mentioned earlier, this budget does not include any either revenues or expenses for funds that the city might receive from the American Rescue Plan Act funding. We've been given a, an estimate for the amount that we think we might receive. But it's, no one knows at this point what we can spend it on. It appears that it's not going to be, be able to be used for whatever we, this, I think it's going to be restricted. I believe you have council, Congressman Vera making a presentation at your regular meeting this evening. But as far as we know, at this point, there have not been any final guidelines released on what those dollars can be spent for. So with that, next slide, Amy. If there are questions regarding anything that you've heard this evening regarding the budget, or the CIP, or goals and accomplishments, I think everyone is here to either answer or take notes and give good answers back to you.
Any questions from the council or comments?
I just have a quick comment, Mayor.
Go ahead, Tim.
I'd just like to, to express my gratitude to staff. I think that there was a lot of hard work done here, and, and I appreciate the additional clarity that we have here. And so, so I just wanted to express my gratitude for that. Thank you.
Anybody else?
A lot of work goes into these budgets. It takes months and months and months to get them together. And, and thanks very much to all the presenters.
Brett, Portia?
Yeah, I'll offer a few comments. I know budgets are difficult, especially during this time with the pandemic and everything. I appreciate everything that all the staff has done to be able to pivot and to, to come up with a budget that's not as terrible as the initial one. And just, you know, I want to make sure that we, we keep the record straight. These meetings are public, they're recorded, and we've got to be as transparent as possible. And so I appreciate staff always being willing to answer questions both on and off, you know, of these recorded meetings. And I hope that we continue to like set this aside and move forward with creating a city and a budget that we all can be proud of.
Thanks, Portia. Brett, anything to add before we...
Obviously, obviously, it's not great in, in, you know, what, what we see with, what might, or what could happen with the police department. But I feel in my heart that we'll be able to resolve all of that once we get this federal thing figured out and, and we go from there.
Yeah, I certainly hope so. I, you know, I'm fearing for the worst, but hoping for the, the best. And, you know, we've still got to look past that, and that's where the 10-year model comes in handy. You know, it's short of a tax measure. The thing that occurred to me today when I was poring through the budget again was, redeveloping the mall is so key. And I know it can't happen soon enough, but, but there's a revenue source that hopefully we can keep, keep on and, and be successful at. If, if the current owner doesn't run, redevelop, we need to find an owner that does. I've, I've heard that before. I think it was city manager. And so with that, I appreciate it. It's, it's very tough. I'm glad we don't have to lay anybody off, that, that we were able to do it through attrition. And like Brett said, if there's enough relief, I hope we can be filling some of those, if, if not all. We just don't know. So with that, I'd like to, there's nothing further?
There, there is. I'm sorry. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. We do have a final section here to do on, on community partnership funding.
Oh, cool. Okay. Oh, that's right. We have a com, public comment for that, too.
And I will go through this all quickly for you. You've had a lot of information. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Catherine Cooley, Assistant to the City Manager. We are going to briefly discuss both community support, funding, and neighborhood improvement program funding. So this is the funding that goes to our nonprofits and neighborhoods, respectively. Next slide, please. Before we get into that, I want to briefly discuss how there are actions that the city needs to take to experience some savings in our general fund. However, we have some new funding sources coming online here shortly in terms of federal and state funding that we haven't had before. And so as staff went into this process, we went into it through the lens of save as much as we can with the general fund. But keep in mind that we got the, we have these under funding sources, and there are some solutions here. And so namely, we have our permanent local housing allocation. That's going to be an annual source for us coming up. We are going to be getting this funding imminently from HCD. That's the recording fee for real estate documents. So this, this can go to housing projects, and specifically, for example, our Navigator project. Next, we have our CDBG CARES funding, CARES funding, which is over $500,000. We have a round three of this funding coming up here. You're going to see this item before you in late April. And the good news about these funds is that HUD has relaxed its maintenance of effort rules. I don't know if you recall hearing about that, but it's basically along the lines of you can't supplant your, your general funding with CDBG funding. Recognizing the economic situation that cities are in, HUD has actually relaxed those rules. And so we have more options available to us than we did before in terms of using our federal funding to relieve our general fund. Also, FEMA is now reimbursing 100% of our Great Plates costs. So whereas we thought we'd have to use this fund for that, we don't anymore. Also, of course, we have the stimulus funding. We know that nonprofit grants are a generally eligible activity, as we've mentioned before tonight. We don't have direction from the Treasury, so we don't really know specifically the ins and outs of what will be acceptable, but it's an option. So all that is to say that we've got some options here for our nonprofits that we didn't have before. Next slide, please. And you can continue. Last year, with our general fund, you can go to the next slide, Amy. We had $120,000 approximately in general fund awards. And so that, that's the base number that we're working with. The slide that you see before you are the requests that we had this year, that total 136,000. And it's mostly applicants that we have had before, with the exception of Single Mom Strong. They are a new applicant here. They've been operating within the city for a couple of years now. And so the, these are our requests, and they are generally the same as what you've seen before. The city, I want to call specifically out the city manager's discretionary fund. For your information, what that is, is that's for people who want to apply year-round for projects less than $2,500. So typically, this would be the city supports for crab feeds, the city support for just the variety of events... the city supports for crab feeds, the city support for just the variety of events that go on in the city. Um, and whereas those have been curtailed during the pandemic, we are expecting them to ramp back up here soon. Uh, so that, that's that item. So these are our general, um, applications and I should say, just for a point of clarification, the Navigator program is not included in this discussion tonight, but it is in the mix here in terms of available funding. Uh, we have the PLHA funding, Navigator will probably move to that. So it's in the mix and you see it here below, but it's not, it's not part of the discussion tonight. Next slide, please. And so what we did with, in, uh, cooperation with the finance committee to council members is we looked at all of these applicants and we looked at the organizations and we thought, who has the best capacity to move to federal funding? Who's familiar with federal funding? Who gets it from us and other entities anyways? And who could be moved to our other sources of funding to relieve our general fund? And this is what the finance committee has recommended. The, the general idea would be to keep the budget line item the same in the, in the budget for your consideration for general fund and that's a little over a hundred and twenty thousand. Keep that with the understanding that staff would make moves in the next couple of months as guidance, there's a release for stimulus dollars as we go through this phase three of CDBG, uh, CARES Act money that we would, where at all possible, move these organizations to the federal funding that we now have available to us. Um, and so you'll see here, there are three organizations that the committee is recommending for general funds and that's mostly because, um, it, they wouldn't be an appropriate use of federal funds. Either they're not eligible or the award is so small that federal oversight wouldn't really be worth the amount of money that is proposed. Um, and so you see the three here and that would, um, amount to a little over eighteen thousand. And then the rest of the organizations would be moved to either CDBG CARES Act or stimulus funding depending on appropriate, the appropriateness of those moves. Um, and so that would result in a savings to the general fund of about a hundred thousand. And, and so that would be our recommendation and our intent for the next couple of months to make those moves um, and to still support these organizations just in a different manner and in a way that, that helps our general fund. Um, and I will pause there. Does anybody have any questions about this part of it?
Questions?
Yeah, I do. I, Jeanie. So, if I understand correctly, um, Catherine, that we have not received any of the SB two funds yet that's still to come?
It's, um, Colleen, do we, do you want to speak to that?
Sure, the PLHA. Yeah, it is not here yet. Um, we are in contact with the state. Um, we hope to get it, uh, within a few months, but, um, it's not here yet.
Can we, can we give a little bit more background on this other than SB two for those listening?
Sure, that is the, um, the money that, uh, was approved a few years back. Um, and it's a, I think it's a seventy five dollar, um, charge that gets attached to real estate transactions, only certain ones, not single family.
I can speak to it a little bit. It's a seventy five dollar surcharge, uh, um, extra recording fee on any, um, uh, recorded document that doesn't generate document tax except for your personal residence. So if you are a, if you own commercial property or rental property and you changed the, uh, do anything to cause it to be recorded, including, uh, a deed of trust, transferring it in or out of a trust, um, affidavits of death, things like that. They slap us an extra seventy five dollars on to the recording fee that you would normally pay. So the only property exempt from that is property that you live in or, uh, property that, um, the recording, uh, generates a documentary tax such as the sale of a property. So, and that, that was, that legislation passed to fund a housing, basically low income housing. And the way it came out, there are a few other things they can do as well, as I understand. Is that correct, Colleen?
Yeah, that's correct. And we, we actually, um, as part of the application part through the state, we came to the council. Oh, I don't know, maybe it's eight, nine months ago with the plan of how we would spend the first, uh, four or five years of that money. Um, and so, yeah, that the great news is it will be a permanent funding source. You know, it's all going to be, um, dependent on how many of those transactions occur during the year. Um, but roughly three hundred thousand a year is what we're sort of anticipating. Um, we think once it starts, we'll get it going, but it's just really hard to, um, and it's not just us. I mean, this is from what we're hearing from others, too. We, it, it just hasn't started flowing yet.
And I'm curious about that because the, I, it's been at least two or three years since the, since the, the legislation passed. Do we have any idea what's delaying the state from rolling it out?
No, just, and I know they're busy with lots of other programs as well. Uh, we have our agreement in with them and it's, um, we follow up with them regularly, just trying to get comments back on that agreement from them. So it's just been a slow process. But when we're, you know, we're staying on top of trying to get that money to us as soon as we can.
And will it be retroactive when we get it since?
Yes, we should, yeah, we should get all the money we're due. We should not be penalized by their delay.
Thank you.
Are there any more questions on the, the draft awards that you see here?
Catherine, I was looking for a good time to call for, uh, public comment. Would this be that?
Yes, let's do that. Yeah, thank you.
Amy, if you wouldn't mind?
Yes, um, we do have one written public comment, which I'll go ahead and read. Meals on Wheels by ACC supports the city staff's recommendation to move our funding request from general funds to CDBG CB funds and will work with the city staff to find mutually beneficial solutions that allow Meals on Wheels to continue to support the needs of Citrus Heights seniors during and after the pandemic. It was submitted by Jennifer Masselo with Meals on Wheels by ACC.
Thank you. All right, Catherine.
All right, next, next slide, please. So these are the next steps that you will see, um, with these nonprofits and with these funding moves. We will have a public hearing, the second meeting in April to discuss that five hundred thousand in CDBG CARES Act also. Um, hopefully we're going to get the PLHA funding any day now, um, from the state. And then you will see, uh, obviously a major, um, planning process and a community engagement process regarding stimulus funds. Next slide, please. So with that, I'd like to shift gears slightly to our Neighborhood Improvement Program. And this is fifteen thousand dollars for projects within our neighborhoods. I'm not referring tonight to the, to the administration funds that they receive, rather just the program funds. Amy, if you could switch slides, please. Um, what we did is we reached out to our neighborhoods in, uh, the holiday season. Applications are typically due at the end of December for this funding pot. And we, as we all know, we're, we're dealing in a different world where, um, our neighborhoods are not meeting as often for health reasons. Um, projects are delayed and so we don't have any project proposals for this fiscal year. But we consulted with the finance committee and it was the general consensus of the committee to maintain that project funding, just knowing that we're dealing with a recovery process. I know at least a couple of the neighborhoods might have projects that they're thinking of. Um, and I plan to, if the council i- is good with the idea, I plan to reach out to the neighborhoods after tonight. Um, but the idea would be to keep that fifteen thousand and instead have a rolling application process that the neighborhoods could submit their ideas whenever they want this next fiscal year. We would amend the program guidelines to make it that way rather than a one shot at the beginning of the year. Um, and we would, we would do it that way and the program would recover along with uh, the rest of the city as we reopen our, um, our city. Uh, and so does anyone have any questions regarding this plan? Comments?
No, no questions, but, um, one comment and that is I know, um, in talking with some of the neighborhood associations that they do have plans afoot. Um, it's just a matter of the meeting again. Um, my own neighborhood association met for the first time face to face this last month and they're already talking about what they want to do for, for a project. So I know it's out there. So I think it's a good idea to give them that opportunity.
Great. Okay. Yeah, we will amend, um, if the council is, if this is the council's direction, we will amend the guidelines and make sure all the neighborhoods know that this is an option now.
I support that.
Um, are you looking for direction now or at the April twenty second meeting, Catherine?
Um, I'm, I'm looking for your general direction here tonight. The direction that I received today will be incorporated into the overall budget document um, on April twenty second. So if there are any other general comments or questions about either community support or neighborhood improvement, I'm happy to have those. Otherwise, I'll, I'll proceed with, with what I've heard here tonight.
Yeah, it still won't be set in stone till, till we adopt it.
Yes, correct. And there will be opportunities on the twenty second to make any final comments.
So with that, Mayor, I do have a quick comment.
Go ahead, Councilman Shaver.
I definitely, uh, would support this. Uh, I think it's a great idea to, to keep it moving forward. Um, so generally I would support the idea.
Thank you.
And, uh, I supported it on the finance committee, so I think you got your, uh, consensus to move forward.
All right. Thank you very much. Next slide, Amy. I'm not sure if I. Um, yeah, so I have your direction tonight. Uh, we will, you'll see preparations from staff over the next couple of months to, um, move funding awards where appropriate so we can get funding to those nonprofits that need it, but that also, um, is the best fiscal decision for the city. So that's it.
Good job. Um, I, I like the, the fact that we can shift some of these costs out of the general fund. That's really helpful. And so thank you to you and, and everybody that's worked on this and the creativity that went into it.
Thank you.
All right. Mr. Boyd, can I close the meeting now?
Yes, Mayor, we are finished. Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna, uh, adjourn the special meeting and we will, uh, re-adjourn in our regular meeting in about fifteen minutes. We'll see you all there. Thank you.